I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order on Tuesday, October 9th, 2012. It's 7:01 PM. We'll begin with roll call.
Barbados?
Here.
Eileen Nichols has been excused. Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Mike DeLecky?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Steve Becker?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding the community development block grant update in this is the Second Street Reconstruction Project. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay. Regarding that Second Street Reconstruction Project, the city did receive a community development public facilities block grant to assist with some of the costs of that project. If you recall, at the beginning of that project, we held a public hearing, which is a grant requirement that we do a public hearing at the beginning of the project to kind of introduce the community development block grant program and how it applies to this project. We're also required to do a second public hearing, basically after the project is done or near completion, to obtain public comments on actually what happened as far as the project, if it was successful or not. So this is a requirement of that grant. So that's why we're here. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. No one, to my knowledge, has submitted any public statements in favor or against or in general, unless that's what's coming up right now, and they're not. Okay. Do we have any council discussion?
Well, has anyone heard what the business owners on Second Street have said?
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the Street Reconstruction Project. I think overall, people are generally very encouraged and happy with the public investment. I will say that the archway or the entry feature, Howard, do you have a date on when that will be?
At this point, I don't have a date yet.
I'm assuming it'll be up within the next month or so. We had to special order that, and it'll make the area certainly an attractive feature for our community.
I agree. Huge improvement.
Thanks.
I note that, and that's not part of the project, but I do note that there continues to be restraining fence on part of the street. How long can we anticipate that being there?
I don't know that I have the answer to that. We may have to get back with you.
Yeah.
My understanding was that that was constructed in the beginning or that was put up because there were items that may have fought, may be dislodged and fall onto the street. It would appear that perhaps that has passed, and so the question would be, is it necessary to have the entire sidewalk cordoned off anymore? I think somebody should probably look at that.
We will.
Are there any other comments?
I had one from a local citizen about the light up on the corner of Furnace and Second. It's right in the middle of the sidewalk. And I'm assuming that there for a reason, but somebody might hit it.
Well, we have Delta Three here to assist, but there really wasn't any other good place for it to go.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I think Killian got there first. The motion is second to close the public hearing. A roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols, excuse me, Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have common council action. I'm not quite certain what we do here. We've held a public hearing. We've received comments, which were only from the council. I'm not sure that there is an action that has to be taken. So.
Move on.
Let's move on to item four on the agenda. That's the consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the September 25th council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, financial statement for September. D, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I'm appointing Chuck Rundy to the Airport Commission effective in November. E is licenses. We have temporary Class B licenses for St. Augustine Parish at 135 South Hickory Street for Oktoberfest, October 19th, from 12:00 noon to 12:00 midnight. Two is change of agent. Becker and Zamina Holdings LLC, Platteville, for premises at 92 North, excuse me, 92 East Main Street, Zanelli's Grill. And the third item is one and/or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic in fermented malt beverages and toxic liquids. There's a long list tonight. F is permits. The first is for a street closing. Hickory Street in front of St. Augustine from Pine to Greenwood for Catholic Newman Community for the Oktoberfest, October 19th, from noon to midnight. And two is a parade. Main Street for UW-Platteville, from UW-Platteville to the City Park for family advocates on October 17th, 2012, from 5:30 PM to 6:00 PM. And finally, G, setting Halloween trick-or-treat hours on Wednesday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Is there any item on that list on which you prefer separate discussion and action?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. That motion carries. Item five tonight on the agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Patrice?
Yeah. I'd like to remind citizens when they come up to make their comments. I'd like you to respect the authority of the President to maintain order and to control the progress of the meeting, to please respect the rights and views of others, just as you would want your rights and views respected. And last, please limit comments to no more than five minutes.
Thank you, Patrice. We have a number of people who'd like to speak tonight under citizens' comments, and I would ask, if you would, please, if you would move over behind where the staff is so we can move people through in an orderly action, beginning with Sue Wenke, followed by Gary Prohaska, Arlene Sis, and Marilyn Gottschalk to begin with. And then there's some others I'll call here so we don't have everybody standing up there. If you would please state your name and local address.
My name is Sue Wenke, and I live at 1879 Stumptown Road, and I'm here tonight about parking tickets that were issued during Friday night, September 21st. It was a high school football game, Dodgeville versus Platteville. There is sign confusion coming in on Southwest Road. I enter Platteville, coming in Southwest Road, and there are several signs at the bottom which start to indicate, and the sign says, "Permit parking or two-hour parking, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday." And there's four postings of this sign going up on the right-hand side towards the stadium. This is the confusion, and I want the people in the audience to see this.
We'd also ask you to direct your comments to the common council.
Okay. The parking that night, I honestly didn't even know that I had gotten a ticket. It really started to rain during fourth quarter. We left under umbrellas, got into the car, seeing no ticket on my windshield, and I thought I was parked from one of the green signs to the next sign, and it said, "No parking beyond this point. There's room for three vehicles." This morning, I went back down, took pictures, went out on Southwest Road last night, took a lot of pictures on my camera, and this is the sign that I think there was more than 20 or 25 of us that all got the tickets. And the one statement that is confusing, and I went to the police department today, and they kind of explained, I was parking in a permit area. It's that word "or." So this afternoon, I'm a subteacher. I wasn't working. I went back over on campus, and I had a survey question, and I walked up to different people. And my question was, "What does this sign mean to you?" Ten people that I contacted, none of them were students. They said it means you can park after 6:00 PM. Six college students, four said, "It means parking, two-hour parking." One person said, out of the college students, "I don't know. I hate to say this online, but the other person said, 'You're screwed.'" A man came by, walking his dog, and I said, "What does this sign mean to you?" And he said, "It means that you can just park between the green sign to the green signs." And from the bridge to the first little access road, as you're coming into town, there's no signage. And then the sign starts. One gentleman was parked there on the same Friday night. He's a Grant County officer, part-time on weekends, and he got a ticket. And he said, "I really looked. From the bridge to the first signage, there's room for probably four cars." And he got a ticket. An English teacher, who's always in a hurry, and she's a little bit late, she said, "I just looked, and what catches my eye on this whole sign is the bottom, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM." And so she thought she was in the rights on that Southwest Road from the bottom of the bridge up to the stadium so that we can go to athletic events. I'm a supporter of track and field. I like to go to that. Our parking now has become very limited to where we can park. We're not welcoming to the community. A nephew of mine came down to watch his granddaughter run at the cross-country meet on Saturday, and he got a ticket because he was parked just a little ways from the bridge. A grandpa that we know of that came up from Darlington to watch a grandson run, he got a ticket. Something's wrong with our signage. Where can we park to attend events at the university? This is $50. And when I went to see the lieutenant today, Mr. Haas, he said, "You need to relax a little bit." But I said, "Do you understand that I didn't know I had a ticket? Wasn't on my windshield, the inclement weather, until Mr. DeLecky sent all of us a letter from himself saying that this is going to be talked about at council. Work with our police chief, our people at the university. Maybe some things have to be ironed out, how we can come to those functions." When I got this, I went, "Oh, my God. Merv, my husband, I got a ticket. I didn't know it." So when I went to the police station yesterday, I was really upset because I missed the 10 days for the review. But Mr. DeLecky said, "Right now, until we can make some decisions, maybe I don't have to pay that $50 ticket. But if this wouldn't have come, I would have been delinquent. They could have taken my license, suspended my registration. Because of the inclement weather that night, I honestly, truthfully, under God, I did not see that ticket that was supposedly on my windshield." Okay.
Thank you. We'll be talking about that later on the agenda. Gary Prohaska. Followed by Arlene Sis and Marilyn Gottschalk.
My name is Gary Prohaska. I reside here at 280 Division Street. I'm talking in behalf of 45 North Second Street. Bringing to your attention a problem that exists with the sidewalk in front of 45 North Second Street. 45 North Second Street is going through a restoration project right now. We have a number of things that dictate exactly where things can go. We have a stone sill that we're doing with. One thing I do commend you for having a wonderful project on Second Street. I think maybe things will turn around on Second Street and bring new activities also to Second Street, and this is what 45 North Second Street is planning on doing. The sidewalk at present has a large hump just to the north of where we are. It's dictated by a manhole cover that's set in the sidewalk. It's fairly level at that point and then drops off very rapidly as you go south. It's about a two-and-a-half-inch drop and four feet if you go directly off of that across the front storefront. We have a stone sill that sits at ground level for the entrance to our establishment there, and also it is the level of the finished floor inside. We have a slope that comes out to the front, to the brickwork that's alongside the curb, the red concrete that's got a brick imprint in it. That drops at the very spot that we have, it drops an inch and nine sixteenths. To reach our sill, it's nine sixteenths of an inch. Right now, the water is able to run into our building in that corner. Not a lot of it, but it does run into it, and it can't run out because it's a hollow. It's below the sidewalk. To my understanding, we tried to settle this without bringing it to council. So we took it to the people in charge of the street project, Delta Three, and they responded fairly rapidly. We talked to the one inspector. He said that he could see there was a problem. He took it to other people at Delta Three. They did approaches. I'm not going to name any names or anything like that, but we had a discussion. We showed them the slopes. We showed them the issues, things like that. The main area that it's affected is three squares of concrete, and it goes up fairly quickly. There's a gentle slope, goes up fairly quickly, and then it goes to the manhole cover. So we said, "Maybe we could have that manhole cover lowered." And to the first person we talked to, the reason that was set was so that they'd have a seven-and-a-half-inch drop on their step going into the doorway next to 45 North Second. That is an entrance to the basement of Schoolgirls. So we said, "Is that a problem?" And we were told, if we contacted the manager of that building, and he was having no problem with dropping that step, that they would remove the sidewalk, those three squares, and take care of the matter. It would be a gentler slope, and we could get below that grade so we could get the water out. But anyway, there is a large amount of money that's being poured into the building per square footage in the front. There is no easy way. What dictates that height is the stone sill we have. We have a wrought iron column that's on the front. We have an entrance to the building, and the finished floor, which all dictates what our height can be. There's no easy solution, and really, the only permanent solution is to lower that sidewalk some, and we're asking for a gentler slope and that you take a look at coming down to it. Don't take the word of me or anybody else necessarily, but I'm inviting you to come down and take a look at the problem we have so that a decision can be made. Thank you.
Arlene Sis, 130 North Hickory Street, Platteville, Wisconsin. I'm representing the Grant County Historical Society, of which the Stone Cottage is a part of. I've heard often that you didn't think anything was going on at the auditorium downstairs. Well, there is. On November 1st, Lance Herdigan, who is an expert on Civil War and the Iron Brigade, which was the brigade from Wisconsin, is going to be speaking at the auditorium on the 1st of November. He is considered an expert in the Iron Brigade, of which the Black Hats were part of. He has written a new book that is, has just been released for publication, and he is going to have that. And in that book, there are several people associated with Platteville who were in the Civil War, and they are in his new book. I would like to invite all to come to this outstanding presentation. He is known countrywide. He just got back from the East Coast talking about the Civil War because this is the 150th anniversary of the Civil War. And a further thing about Lance Herdigan is that when the state of Wisconsin celebrated their Sesquicentennial anniversary a few years ago, he was the man who was in charge of the whole thing. So we're getting somebody of high quality coming. Be there or be square.
What time?
What time?
It is 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
But you can come earlier. We have posters that we're posting all over. It is going to be a wonderful evening to have something as a celebration of the Veterans' Day program that we do once a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Gottschalk, followed by Ag Ju, Regina Pauli, and Larry Dressler. And then Mary Kelly.
Hi, Marilyn Gottschalk, 235 Virgin Avenue. This is my personal reaction to you people on the council after having sat through your last workshop session and watching you agonizing through some really difficult decisions that you're going to end up having to make. I'd like to make the following comments, and as I said, this is just personal. I know from past experience what happens when a member of the council makes a vote that makes people upset, okay? They have no problem letting you know that they're upset. So half the time when you vote, you've got people who are agreeing with you, the other half, you've made half the others mad. I know that you probably are coming up on making some decisions that are going to upset people. So I'm making the following comments. I don't know how many of the taxpayers here in Platteville are fully aware of the problems that are facing this city, basically economic problems. And I don't know what the answer to this is, but I was thinking that perhaps if there were, if some effort could be made to communicate to more than just people who come to this council meeting, what the problems are in this city, we hopefully would have some recognition that we've got problems and we need to make some hard decisions. If they become aware, I'm hoping, this is the philosophy that you educate people and then they make right decisions. I am rapidly coming to the conclusion that that philosophy does not work, probably. But if people are aware that we are in some amount of trouble, maybe they can also accept that, number one, the city services that they are so used to having, perhaps we can't afford to give them those services anymore. Maybe we need to cut some of the services. And I don't want to be the person, thank you, that has to make the decision about what services we're going to cut. And apparently, a lot of you don't want to be that person either, but you're going to be forced into it. When we talk about cutting services, we also can look at, it seems to me, the idea of how do we raise revenue and what are some of the services that we can cut? So if you will pardon me, I will give you a couple of things that came to mind. We're very used to having our garbage collected, okay? And we probably are not going to cut garbage collection because I do not want to have to go out in my backyard and bury my garbage every week. But maybe we can't afford that anymore in terms of a city service, and maybe we need to start charging people for garbage collection. I know that's an idea that came up, and it was basically not really discussed very fully, but that's a possibility. My brush gets picked up on a regular basis. I just throw it out on the curb, and somebody shows up from the garage, and it gets picked up. But I know that the way that happens is that you've got the city trucks wandering through the city looking for brush. Okay. How about if we eliminate that service on that basis, and I call the city garage when I've got a load of brush that needs to go? They come specifically to my request, and I get billed for picking up my brush. If I don't want to pay that, I'm going to take it out to the dump, and I'll have to do that myself. I guess my point of this is that people here in Platteville need to understand that we truly need to be in all of this together and that we need to get through it with the least amount of damage to the crucial services that we have here that we need and to protect our city employees, which I feel very strongly about. But there's going to be damage. And so my point is, could we just please look at distributing it on a fairly, on a fair basis? And I know you think I'm probably here to bring up the museum, and I won't go into it except to say that the museum budget, to me, is an example of not fair. Okay? If you're going to do cuts, be fair. Do not go after particular entities and give them such big cuts that they're really hurt. Okay. I feel like a schoolmarm standing up in front of a class and lecturing them. But I'm urging all of you to please, in your workshop sessions, will you talk to each other so that we can hear your thinking, so that we know how you plan to address some of these problems? I think that would be very helpful to you and to all of us. And I'm so sorry you have to go through this, and I do remember what it was like. Okay. Thank you for doing what you're doing. At least thank you for what I hope you're going to end up doing.
Reserve your thanks. Thank you. Ag Ju, and followed by Regina Pauli, and followed by Larry Dressler, followed by Mary Kelly. And if I mispronounce that badly, please forgive me.
Actually, I'm going to pass my laptop down, and you can look at it. And I'm speaking on behalf of 45 North Second Street. We have a restoration process going on, and, you know, I take a lot of pride in my food, so I want to emphasize in the building also. So we're doing a full restoration, and this is a minor issue. Everybody's geared up for a fight. I come from a different school, you know? I come from the opposite. I'm a positive, optimistic person. I think it's a minor issue. We can get it fixed. Everybody wants to know who's going to pay for it, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it comes down to, that sill that you will see in the picture, I pointed that out to Delta Three, before the sidewalk was being poured. I pointed it out to the bank, who was the owner at that time. So where it fell through the cracks, I don't know. I mean, if everybody's going to go out there with a tape measure, measure an inch of slope, that's why we have people as such in place is to oversee projects. So I have seven people who I'm employing right now, full-time. They're on the job, and we're waiting to resolve this problem before we move on. So timing is very crucial to us. We like to be open right about Thanksgiving, and this is an issue that we need to fix. And I know we'd like to table it till next week and the week after. And I like quick resolution. And I think if you remove those three squares and you slope it away from my front entrance, that's all I'm asking for. And I think if it was your property, your home, your business, you had water coming in because the sidewalk was poured wrong, I think you'd want a resolution as quick as possible. Today, it's raining. I have water in my basement right now. I passed, just went by the building about an hour ago. So I do have water seeping in to my basement and onto my floor. And it's a 107-year-old beautiful floor. I'd hate to destroy it just because the concrete didn't get laid right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Regina Pauli, 235 North Elm Street. I don't have much more to say, only that financially, we're hoping that Delta Nine, that you will help us get Delta Nine to fix a problem that was created. Thank you.
Larry Dressler, followed by Mary Kelly.
Good evening. Yeah, I don't like to see these things get into a personal issue either. And I've heard more than one reason why this happened.
Did you address your comments to the council?
One of them is, there's a manhole up there for the electrical. That pretty much guides, that pretty much guides you where you're going to pour your concrete, from Yeeg's door to that manhole. And I called, I got a cold tonight, so bear with me. Rural Construction with the general contractors. And the reason I was talking to them is they talked to me about repairing some brickwork on Cheryl Zizima's building. And we got talking about the sidewalk problem over there, this a couple weeks ago. And I only said just a few words, and he said, "Larry, I know exactly where that's at." I didn't even, I just thought it was across the street is our problem. He said that manhole got moved up and got moved down, and that's where it ended up. He said that manhole got moved up and got moved down and that's where it ended up. In order for, in order to cover the top of that manhole, that you don't walk by that sidewalk and trip over it, you've got to bring that concrete from Yeg's door, raise it quick so you can level the top of that manhole. And it's real easy to see it. And I, I run a concrete crew for my uncle and my pop when I was growing up, probably 16, 20, 24 years old. So I'm familiar with what the problem is. And in order to, in order to drop that sidewalk at Yeg's below his stone sill, which was seen before the concrete was poured, you'd have to go, would be Colin Gary, you might get by with three seconds, but I think you're talking more five to make it a nice walk. And like I said, talking to Rural, Nick, Nick is the guy I talked to, that manhole was the issue from day one. So I'm asking you folks to put this in your own realm. If this was running by the front door of your house, would you be happy with it, you know? So it, it definitely is a mistake. And like Yeg said, we would hope that, that the city council would, would correct it. Yeg spent a lot of money there, he's going to be a great asset to the city of Platteville, especially starting that Second Street out. So I think he needs to be treated fair and honest. Thank you.
Mary Kelly.
Hello, my name is Mary Kelly and I moved to Platteville in 2000, although my ancestors, actually my great-grandmother graduated from the academy in 1860-something or other, so I've had five generations of my family here and around here.
Could you state your local address?
My local address is 150 Roundtree Avenue. And what I'm here about is to thank you for making this community so inviting that I was able to entertain 84 people from across the nation and some from Great Britain here this summer in August. It was sort of a hard-fought battle because you don't have an airline hub here. And so to get our board of about 20 members from across the United States to agree to Platteville as a destination, it wasn't easy. But I've received lots of mail and responses. This letter came from the, from Claire Christian, who happens to be the president of the Isle of Man. She was here for all four days and she ended up saying that she enjoyed every minute that she spent here. And I'd like to pass this along around. It's just a copy. I have the original saved treasure, a treasure from the convention. But what brought this convention here was the history of the Manks people that landed here in the 1830s. They were some of the first immigrants from Great Britain. In many cases, when they came through either Ellis Island or from Canada, they put down that they were British citizens that were coming here, but actually they were from an independent nation called the Isle of Man. And a lot of them settled just 25 miles up the road from here, very close to Linden in Iowa County, very close to Mineral Point. On Highway B, there's a little cemetery with about 100 graves. And it is a historic site. It's been on the register of historic places for a very long time. This is what we consider hallowed ground here in the United States. We now have the only Manks museum in all of North America at our university over here. Three chancellors were able to decide that this was a worthy project. And one of our Manks people from Rockford, Illinois, was able to give a $100,000 gift to secure the room, to make it a permanent installation in Olds, excuse me, in Olds Brook Hall. I have asthma and sometimes I'm not very good at speaking. But I took the opportunity to write a letter to each of you and I wanted to speak at this meeting to tell you that among the things that they enjoyed here in Platteville were the Mitchell Roundtree Cottage that Grant County takes care of, the Rollo Jameson Museum and the gallery and the mining museum there, that all ties in with the history of the early Manks people that came here with mining skills and agricultural backgrounds. And they also were fishermen. We got them down to the Mississippi River and we showed them what was down there. This is the souvenir booklet from that convention. I think there are like 70 some odd pages in it, but I'll pass this around too, so you can see it. The center pages, the very center of the book, outline the four-day schedule. You'd need to see that because it was a very successful convention and all of those events wove together to tell the story of why people came to this area so many years ago. And they continue to come here. So why did my husband and I agree to move to Platteville? Yes, I have roots here. I graduated in 64 from the university here. And my mother graduated in 1933 from that same university. Actually, the story goes back that both of my parents were actively visiting the university so many years ago. But the reason that I think we should protect our heritage is that we're having a kind of a, what do I want to say, a building boom. We're having a lot of people come here. Every year, we have a lot of people come here to the university, but we have a lot of new businesses here. And I think it's important that the people who move here learn what it is that makes this area so special. And that's keeping that sense of history of where we've been and how we've grown that is important to convey, not only to the newcomers, but all the young people that grow up in this community that weren't around when some of the things that are displayed there are still there. So I think my fervent plea is that you people will think very carefully about how you make your decisions about this budget. Don't lose what has made Platteville so good and so wonderful. I had a very good chance to get feedback from Mountain View, California, and from the DC area and everything in between. And I know it's worth saving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the people there for citizens' comments. I have a question. Howard, if we have a drainage problem there, is this a contractor issue or a design issue over on Second Street?
I would like to defer this to Dan Dressen from Delta Three. I think that this was, that we've improved the situation from what there was before and I'd like for Dan to explain. He's got some photos to show you what, what we have out there.
Come forward, but if we're still getting drainage, then it doesn't much matter what the photo show, does it? Are we still getting drainage? Okay, well, we need to correct that.
Dan Dressen's with Delta Three Engineering. I agree that there is a, that there is a drainage issue with what they're planning on doing with their property. However, the, I guess the, the biggest thing that that's being claimed is that it was designed improperly. The sidewalk was put back nearly identical to where it was before, actually were an inch lower on the building than it was before. Before, we lowered the sidewalk at that location by an inch. We've got the pictures here that I can show. Basically, what it comes down to is water's been getting in that location for a long time. The sill's deteriorated already, so the evidence is there. I guess their concern about a manhole location, the manhole really has nothing to do with this, this grade issue. If we lower this, we're going to have a flat spot potentially in the sidewalk. If the council would like to replace this, because you want to help them out so they don't have to make modifications to their storefront, that's your decision, but really, it's not a contractor issue, it's a design issue.
Wait, timeout, timeout. You got a sidewalk that drains into a building?
No, it does not drain into the building. It pitches away from the building.
It pitches, then how are they getting water in there?
Because the sidewalk was originally built up along the edge of the building because of the grade elevation change along Second Street. It basically, it matches at their door. The door's in the middle of the building. As you go south, the sidewalk goes with the, with the elevation of the street. So it goes from basically at the floor elevation and goes up on the building. It drains away from the building.
Then why are they complaining about draining toward the building?
Because the original, when we reconstructed Second Street, the original storefront came out to the edge of the sidewalk where it is now. And the new design has, is actually stepped back about two to three inches and they're going to have a different style of storefront. So when they removed that, I don't know if it was a block or a false block in front there, there was a, there was a tight seal right there. But now, when they pull that, remove that material and go with their, their wood and glass storefront, there's about a three-inch gap by about seven-eighths inch low point in there.
So it wasn't draining toward it until they did this?
There's still not draining towards it. The sidewalk still pitches from the building to the street. It's just that now there's a, a gap in there. And there's a couple other properties on Main Street where they've done some different, they've, they've filled that gap in either with wood or a, some type of a cement grout mixture to fill that in because of the same situation.
So there's no water drain toward the building?
No. The water that they're talking about is draining down the, you know, if any water runs down the face of the building, it could, it could potentially pool in that location, but the water, a drop of water that hits the sidewalk drains away from the building.
That's pretty easy to confirm. I mean, if anybody has questions. If that's what it is, then it seems to me that's a pretty easy fix. If it's draining away from the building, and that should be easy enough. I'll go over there with a bottle of water and I'll dump it on the sidewalk and I'll watch it.
Correct, because there's about two inches of pitch from the building out to the side, out to the curb.
Is there a question down here? Barb?
Pardon?
Oh.
We were just saying, if not a bottle of water, use a, use a beer.
Well, it'll probably happen every Friday and Saturday night anyway, so.
Don't waste the beer.
So what you're saying is the fix is to use some kind of grout or wood or something to seal that space, at which point the water will drain away from the building as it moves down the front of the house, the front of the building and then away from the curb.
Right, yep. And we, we've done a similar fix in, on several other properties where something is lower than, you know, the, the joining grade. You put in a grout that's sulfate and chloride resistant so this doesn't pop out with the salt. The, there's actually, I actually took a picture of a, a property on Main Street. They actually just put a, like a, a wood plate along there because of this, because of the identical situation. So there's many solutions.
You want to go look at this tomorrow?
Yeah.
Steve?
I, I just have, I mean, this was brought to people's attention prior to the pour, is that correct?
This was brought to our attention the first, deleted last week in September or the first week in October. That's when it was brought to our attention. The owner had contacted, the owner of the building at the time, but the owner of the building did not contact us or the contractor to, to change this. We knew there was work going on there, but nobody mentioned about changing the storefront to myself or our inspector.
So the pour was, the, the street was poured before you were approached?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a product of just, just, you know, unfortunate timing. I mean, the owner of the building now didn't have control of the building until after we had everything taken care of. Or that's what, that's what they told us last Thursday, when we met with them, Wednesday and Thursday.
Ken?
Yeah, I, I looked at the decorative lights and there are 14 decorative lights out there. And I noticed that the light in front of 45 North Second is the lowest one as far as in relation to the sidewalk. The base of that light is lower than the sidewalk. For the rest of the 13 lights, those lights, the base, is at the level of the sidewalk or higher. So either the base of the light is, was put too low.
Which is correct.
Or the sidewalk was put too high.
The base of the sidewalk was put in an inch too low.
The base of the light.
Of the light, excuse me, yeah, yeah. Base of the light, sorry. The light, the base of the light was put in an inch too low. The controlling grade right there is the doorway that goes into the schoolgirls. And I realize it's just a basement door, but it still controls the grade, so we don't have a large step right there.
Well, to me, the, the best way to correct it is to put in, is to replace enough of the slabs to lower that grade.
Correct, but the question is, the, the, nobody did anything incorrect here is the problem. This was a pact, a factor of not knowing what was going to happen when the storefront was redone. So the question is, is who should pay for that? Should it be the designer? Should it be the contractor? Should it be the city? Or should it be the property owner? And that determination of, of what happened there, I guess, has to be determined.
What is, I guess the question I have is what's the purpose of retainage in a contract?
The purpose of retainage is for them to fix something that's installed improperly. The question is, was it installed improperly? And we went back through and we shot elevations on the sidewalk from, we compared them from before construction and after construction. And the sidewalk was actually lower now, it's one inch lower at that point than it was prior to construction. So it, there's a seven-eighths inch of a, of a step down right there. There would have been a two-inch step down if we would, if we would have put the sidewalk back exactly where it was at.
What would you estimate to be the cost to correct this?
It's going to cost $1,000 by the time you replace those three sections of concrete, reprep it and pour them back in.
Or you could just put, fill the gap.
Or you could fill the gap, yeah.
And that would cost how much?
I would think by the time you spend a couple hours cleaning out the, the loose material in there, buying a bag of the proper material, a couple hundred bucks.
Let the... Should we let him come back up?
If you want. Well, you know, one of the things that I don't think we want to do tonight is, is turn this into, we're going to discuss this, and I have to be honest with you, I think I want to go look at this thing.
Yeah.
And see what's there, because we got one point of view, we got another point of view. We're not going to resolve this, because obviously people have different views of this.
Correct. I would recommend that we have a meeting sometime. Invite the council, invite the owners, invite Howard, myself, and we just meet down there. We look at what's happening and go from there.
Let's do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Set something like that up. Okay. Moving on tonight to reports, we have committee reports, the Community Saferoast Committee, Steiner. Airport Commissioner Nichols, he's not here. Plan Commissioner Becker.
Nothing yet.
Tourism Committee Becker.
Nothing yet.
There are other reports. We have the 2013 Staffing Plan Quarterly Progress Report, the Airport Financial Statement for September, the Water and Sewer Revenue and Expense Report for September, the City Attorney Itemized Statement for September, and Department Progress Reports. Are there any items there in which you have questions or comments?
Just a question, and that would be, is the staffing report going to be a part of our budget discussion?
Would you like it to be? It can be.
Yeah, I believe it should be, because there were a couple of questions raised in it.
I certainly can talk about it. I'm going to pull that out here so that we can bring it with us. Okay, moving on to item seven, action items. Under A, we have the September 20th, 2012 parking citations, and in fact, there were two days of parking citations that were of issue there, I believe, and maybe more.
I thought it was three.
At least two and three apparently, so.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I think.
Saturday too?
I think so.
Saturday for cross-country?
We don't have an item in here specifically for this issue here, but we talked about this briefly at the last meeting and realized we needed to put it on the agenda and talk about it. I asked the city manager, Larry Burkey, in the interim to go back and, and see if he couldn't discover in our minutes or talking about our intent, I think Steve had mentioned this, that our intent of the parking wasn't to limit parking around the stadium at events like football games or cross-country meets or whatever it was. And in fact, there are a couple of instances where we did discuss that, once on June 26th and once, once on August 14th. And, and I recall even earlier than that having that. And, and I recall even earlier than that having that discussion as well. Uh, and it seemed to me that our intent was never to, uh, do that. In fact, I think Steve at one point talked about the use of discretion, uh, to deal with that. And I don't know about the rest of the council, but I don't think our intent ever was to restrict that kind of thing. And, and it struck me that it's not that hard for us to, if we need to, create a mechanism by which people can park there temporarily for football games, not unlike how we close a street or we eliminate parking on Hickory Street for parades or anything like that. It wouldn't be that hard for us to suspend the parking regulations for five hours for a football game or something.
It, it was my understanding that at one point we actually did a modification of the ordinance to create four-hour parking on Southwest Road and Marquee Avenue. I do not believe that that has been signed properly. It is incredibly disappointing to me that we have discussed this numerous times and that staff have not brought forward. I mean, this council has talked about. I'm, I'm frankly embarrassed that we have issued tickets to people from out of town and out of state and visitors to this community when I know it was the intent of this council to provide that parking near the stadium for both high school and university events. And, uh, if it needs to extend to the cross-country area in the Memorial Park, but it's incredibly disappointing. It would seem to me that staff should bring forth those, uh, changes that need to be made. And I, I, I do recall changing to four-hour parking on Marquee and Southwest Road, and I don't believe that that's been, uh, signed.
Marquee has four hour on it, I've seen that.
I thought we did the, I thought we did Southwest at the same time. Patrice, are you?
Uh-huh, I remember.
There's four hour parking on Summer Southwest.
I believe all of the signs are up for that.
Yes.
Um, so to criticize staff on this, really, uh, we've got all the signs up.
Okay, we, we could spend a lot of time looking for blame or we can fix the problem. And I, I personally think that those tickets were issued, uh, certainly within the letter of the law, and you have to give the police department credit for being straightforward and consistent with how they apply those rules. But I think also, uh, it wasn't our intent that that's what was supposed to happen there. And I'd sure like to see those.
We were not to give tickets during events, period.
So.
That was my understanding.
Well, I'd make a motion that the tickets given on those dates be forgiven.
I'd second.
Motion and second, discussion.
This is Friday, Saturday night, is there a limit to the specific area or all citations issued those three nights?
I believe we're talking about citations in the region of the stadium. So if a citation was issued by the city swimming pool, I don't believe that that would fall in the realm of where we're talking about. I think we're talking about the region of the stadium. So that would be Marquee, it might be Hickory, it might be, um.
Chestnut.
I don't know, what?
Steely.
Those areas right around there.
Yeah.
Where people park for football games. Southwest, uh, I can't remember the little road that goes between Southwest and the tower. I don't know what that.
Jay Street.
Jay, Jay Street.
Take a look at them, and if you have a question, err on the side of being easy. Barb, you got this?
All right, we'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, would you, is, you wanna state the dates again? Let's be sure we have that clear.
Actually.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights.
Saturday of nineteen twenty, twenty-one. So it wasn't on the twenty-first, it was the twenty-ninth then?
Ple- please, we, yeah, we, we can't do that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure there weren't two cross-country meets.
Okay, so there was a cross-country meet on the twenty-ninth?
Nineteenth, twentieth, and the twenty-ninth.
All right.
Those are the dates.
Right.
Nineteenth and twentieth were two football games.
Was a, uh, university football game.
Right.
And, and I don't know if there was a soccer game at that time that people, I mean, the university also has, uh, men's and women's soccer that play in the stadium. And I don't know if there was a soccer game during that time period.
Okay. Uh, there were citations issued primarily on September twentieth and twenty-first. Those were the two fir- football games. One was a high school football game, one was a UW- Platteville School, uh, football game. As far as the soccer, uh, were there citations, citations actually issued?
I, I don't even know if there was a game, or a match, or whatever you call it.
Uh, since that time, we've suspended, uh, until we could have a council, talk about this. Uh, we suspended some of the enforcement down there during those special events. Uh, what would be nice is if the council for the future can, uh, indicate their intent with maybe a special events exemption, that maybe the chief makes a determination, uh, what constitutes a special event, so that we don't have this in the future. Uh, that maybe would get the, uh, intent of the council on record then.
Yeah, 'cause I could see this also happening on commencement.
Well, that's basically what we did when we had this discussion, uh, before, is we essentially said when they have these events, and I believe the chief was probably here, or else he, somebody should've been, we said when we have these events, we shouldn't be enforcing parking. I mean, it's right there. And they, we did it. Have on this, so it's thing here or map here, they're showing the blue on, uh, Marquee and Southwest Road. There's no way that can hold enough cars there to fill that stadium. And you got a ten-thousand, uh, capacity stadium over there.
Which we haven't filled since the Bears.
Yeah, but.
How about the football team is getting better?
But I think, I think we need to go further on Southwest Road or.
Well, at this point, I'm saying we should suspend, we should forgive the tickets that were issued on Thursday, September twentieth, Friday, September twenty-first, and Saturday, September twenty-ninth, when people parked for the university and the high school football games and the high school cross-country meet. And I've made that motion now with dates.
And I seconded.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm just asking, so we have no uncertainty as to what that is, so. Uh, is there any other discussion about that? The only question I would have is anyone who had paid a ticket, I would presume would receive a check in the mail.
That would be correct. We have, uh, for September twentieth and twenty-first, we have all the citations pulled, pulled aside. And we're prepared to do that.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is it appropriate, Mr. President, at this point to offer an, uh, another, um, motion that would, uh, indicate that in terms of special events uh, in the stadium and/or the, um, fieldhouse, that it would be at the discretion of the police chief to suspend writing tickets?
I think it would be, um, I, I wonder whether we also want to ask the university, the high school, and anyone else that holds events there to provide the police chief with a listing of those events so that it's clear when those things might happen.
Did I do? I would add that.
Okay, you wanna make it a formal motion?
Don't move.
I can.
You like that, didn't ya?
Okay, and I'm gonna have to try to reconstruct that. Jan, let's ask Jan.
Special events at the stadium and. Fieldhouse. And provide a schedule. The school district, university will provide a schedule to the police chief. And the chief has the discretion to suspend tickets.
Enforcement, not tickets.
Okay.
Although it will be permissible to park on the street, it is worth noting that the university put together a map of all of the parking lots that are available. And I wanna make sure that they get a special thank you, 'cause this is very helpful for us.
Okay, we have that motion in a second. Is there any other discussion about that? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to something really interesting. This is the contract for the TID seven amendment. We have a staff discussion.
Okay, uh, s- staff had requested, uh, proposals for consultants to help with the, uh, uh, ability to amend, uh, TID seven, which is their downtown TIF district, primarily in relation to the discussions that have taken place about a redevelopment site of the library block. That block right now is partially within the TID and partially without. So if we're looking at a, a redevelopment of that, it makes sense to have that all included in the TIF district. Uh, we'd also, as part of that proposal request, um, also had an alternative request, um, to do an overall financial fiscal analysis of all of our TIF districts to see if the, the consultants had any suggestions as far as making, uh, other modifications. If we look at donor districts, uh, if we look at which, uh, districts may be performing better than others and if there are other actions that we could take to capitalize on the ones that are doing better than the others, et cetera. Um, so we had those submitted as proposals. We received, um, four of them. One from Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, Veer Becker Associates, Ellers and Associates, and Vandewell and Associates. Uh, I have a brief summary of those proposals included in your packet. Generally, I guess I would say that all of the, uh, firms that submitted a proposal would be qualified to do the work, and all of the proposals would achieve that, uh, initial result of, uh, modifying TID seven. Uh, regional planning did not specifically mention that, uh, their proposal included, uh, the overall TID analysis. Um, but based on my review of the, the recommendation, or my recommendation on the review of the proposals, I would suggest, uh, selecting Vandewell and Associates to do the TID seven amendment. Uh, their proposal had an estimated cost range of three thousand to five thousand, which was the, the cheapest overall. Um, they do require a little bit more work on the part of staff to achieve that, but I think all of the additional work is definitely worth the, uh, reduced cost. None of that would be too difficult for us to, uh, achieve. So I do think that would be the best value for the city. If the council is also a- agreeable to doing the additional work to do the TID amendment, to us, it makes sense to, uh, use the same firm to do that work since it's directly related, uh, to the TID seven amendment. And so we would also recommend, uh, selecting Vandewell Associates to do that additional work. And they also provided a range for that of five thousand to seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, it, it is possible that we just, uh, select one without the other, but if you do choose both, I would recommend Vandewell for both of those. Are there any questions?
Does this work to be completed in two thousand twelve?
Um, it would not have to be completed in two thousand twelve, but it could be completed in that timeframe.
So this would, uh, I know that this is an expenditure not currently authorized in the budget and that, uh, so the question is, is it in the two thousand twelve budget or the two thousand thirteen budget? And if it's in the two thousand twelve budget and is currently not budgeted, from where do we get the approximately, I don't know, eight to twelve thousand dollars?
I don't know the answer to that question.
This is a TID eligible expense. We would be taking this out of TID District number seven.
Which is the redevelopment district?
Yes, it is. And, um, this addition would make it easier for, or make it possible for the library block to be redeveloped, uh, as an entire block in its entirety. If we wait till two thousand thirteen, it would still come out of the TID, TID District number seven budget. Uh, it is not in either budget at this point. Uh, if you would prefer that it be in the two thousand thirteen budget, we can certainly discuss that and delay this until two thousand thirteen. It, it, it's not going to impact your tax, uh, revenue to the general fund. It's part of the TIF district funding. I, I think I'm comfortable speaking for Steph and saying we're, we're prepared to go forward in two thousand twelve.
I, I personally support this, I just wanted to know. And I, I would support doing it this year, I just wanted to know where the expenditure would be charged.
I just wanna note one thing too. When people hear the redevelopment of the library block, there may be a few people thinking, what's gonna happen to the library? And the intent is to leave it right there, still being a library, except it would be different digs and better. So it's not, we're not getting rid of anything here. And we have a chance to maybe make it better, and so that's kinda what we're looking at here. Any other questions on this? Be care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, engage Vandewell and Associates for both the, um, both scopes of work that were described by Joe relative to the TID analysis and then, um, re.
To amend TID seven?
Yeah, amend it.
Second.
The motion in a second, is there any other discussion?
Is there any limit to how much can be spent?
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Twelve thousand five.
Okay, is that part of your motion?
Eight to twelve, five, I mean, it was three to five and five to seven fifty, so I.
I think Brian was looking for that to be added to the motion.
Is that part of your motion?
Yeah.
In a second, if it's okay?
Okay.
Maximum of twelve-five.
And when would it start?
It's to be completed in two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C under action is Reserve Class B Liquor Licenses. We have a resolution and an ordinance here. Uh, the staff discussion briefly?
Well, enclosed in your packet is a resolution that establishes the Reserve Class B Liquor License quota for the city of Platteville, and an ordinance that basically establishes the fee for the reserve liquor license. We're proposing that the fee be the minimum fee of ten thousand dollars in addition to the annual liquor license fee as established by Wisconsin statutes. At the last meeting, we were a- asked to address two issues. One, whether a reserve license is transferable to another location by a licensee. And the second, whether there is a definition of a bona fide club. First, the, the reserve license may not be transferred from place to place, and that I have listed in statute one twenty-five point oh-four, parent twelve, parent A. This means that a reserve license issued to a licensee for a specified premise cannot be transferred to another premise without paying the initial Reserve Class B fee for the new premises. And for the second issue of the bona fide club, I provided that, that is provided for in statute and that is in your materials then too. So any questions?
No, apparently not. Any discussion? We have two things we would have to do to pass this. One is to pass the resolution, the other is to adopt the ordinance.
They have to be separate?
I think so.
We have to approve resolution, resolution twelve dash twenty-nine, uh, regarding the Reserve Class B Liquor License.
Second, a motion.
A motion in a second. Okay, any discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two under C is the ordinance repealing and recreating Section thirty-six point oh-five and thirty-six point oh-six regarding the Reserve Class B Liquor Licenses.
And will we adopt ordinance number twelve dash thirty-four?
Second.
The motion is second, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D under action tonight is ordinance twelve dash thirty-five, modifying Chapter thirty-three, the rental code, specifically the late fee. Uh, Joel, a brief comment on that?
Yeah, back in June, we amended Chapter thirty-three to include a late fee, or at least the ability to collect a, a late fee after licenses have been expired. Uh, this discussion, uh, came up again in, in August, uh, when we talked about the rental notification policy. As the ordinance is written, it says the late fee can be assessed sixty-one days after the license has expired. Then again, in August, when we talked about it, the council's direction was that the late fee would be assessed anytime after the license has expired. So we've got two different directions as far as, uh, from the council, the discrepancy on that sixty-day period of time. 60-day period of time. So to clarify that, staff would like to amend Chapter 33 to make it consistent, and our recommendation is to have the late fee, at least the ability to assess the late fee any day after the license has expired. So chapter, or the proposed ordinance would make that change. Any questions?
With you, is the fee, has the fee been established?
The fee was established at the August meeting, it's 25 dollars, and then there's some language about not to exceed 100 dollars, which I'm still confused on, but that's another matter.
So, help me understand this. If I have a rental property and I call and schedule an inspection, but the inspector can't be there until after my license expires, can I be fined?
The idea is that if, if the fee is, if it expires and it's due to some action or inaction of the property owner, that it's their fault, then we would probably assess a fee. If it's due to a scheduling conflict or staff is late in getting the notice to them or some other problem on our part, we would not assess a fee. And the ordinance, as it's written, says the fee may be assessed, it's not a shall-be-assessed. So there's some discretion on staff's part to choose to select or enforce the fee or not. And I think we need to have that in there because there's always going to be situations that come up that are outside of the control of the property owner, and we need to recognize that.
I have one of those going right now. I could not get an inspection before the expiration.
Well, that, and that was my concern, is that if a property owner has in fact tried to get an inspection but can't get the inspection and the license expires, I don't think the property owner should be fined.
And I would say that the, the notification policy has, or that notice has been very successful. The inspector is overbooked at the moment, so I wouldn't see assessing a late fee realistically until, you know, probably the beginning of next year. But at least going forward, we need to have clear direction on when that would be implemented.
Okay.
That 25 dollars then, that's per day after that, right?
It could be, yes.
But for not more than four days. If the maximum that could be assessed is 100 dollars.
Correct.
But that, that's in the other part of the ordinance, not in this one. And this is essentially to give them the discretion. When I called, there simply were no appointments left, and we had to go into October, so.
Move to adopt ordinance 12 35. Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Ken, you got something?
So if a person has four properties and the license is expired for each one, the fee could go be 400 dollars?
Theoretically, yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E under action is the Adopt a Park program, which we discussed last time. Helpful to neighbors to be able to contribute to the maintenance upkeep and viewfication of their local parks. It's similar to Adopt a Highway, it's a good idea.
How move to approve?
Like him. The motion is second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dos?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under information tonight, we have three items. The first is a rezoning petition for an RLO, that's residency, low occupancy district. This is the, the folks that live up in the Preston Drive, Sunset Drive, Moonlight Drive and West Hill Avenue neighborhoods. The petition's been submitted from the owners of properties in this area to put their properties into that RLO designation. Anyone who hasn't signed that petition won't be forced in, but I think about 80% of the folks up there have indicated their desire to be part of that. There were a number of people here tonight that indicated their support for this, including John Duesbury, Evelyn Duesbury, Dick Rundell, Sylvia Karowski, Bill Hudson, Mary Hudson, Tom and Deb Osteen and Marjorie Beerbauer. So a lot of people here supportive of that. And that'll come up for the vote next time. That should help preserve the, the R1 feel and nature of those neighborhoods, which was what we wanted to do when we did this. The second item under information is a rezoning request for 250 East Main Street. This is across from the fire station. This is a request to have at least part of the first floor be able to be redeveloped. That's part of the conditional use permit as well, they two are linked together. The desire to have the back half of that storefront be a rental property, residential rental property, and the front retain the commercial property designation. And the conditional use permit is to allow that to occur in the rezoned Central Business Transition District. So C and, B and C are the same item essentially, but both have to be passed for that to happen.
Is there parking in the back of that building?
Yes.
Yes.
There is?
That was part of the discussion at the planning commission, that there be sufficient parking.
Can we require that that parking be blacktopped as a condition?
Yes, that's one of the recommendations.
Good.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. Ken?
All right, I do have a question about it, and that is, it says you want to make use of the ground floor for residential, and I didn't go down and look at it, but what about the possibility of flooding of the ground floor? I have seen that area back there flooded, and so I'm wanting to find out what the hazard is as far as flooding.
I think the ground floor refers to is actually above the basement is the.
Right.
Where flooding occurred. Ground floor, what they're referring to would be.
Basement.
It would be very high, it won't be flooding.
No, but at plant commission, you were talking about the basement.
Right, you'd like to put apartments down there as well.
Yeah.
Two, I believe. And the proper amount of window.
We talked about parking lot back there too, so there'll be.
Yeah, it's first paragraph, like convert basement area to residential. So what does that mean? How far down is it?
Yeah, you're correct. His, part of his request is also to put two units in the basement. That property is not designated as a floodplain according to the official FEMA maps, whether it's ever had flooding or not, I, I don't.
Well, I've seen it flooded, so I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Is this the building that has water actually running through the basement underneath?
It's next to Coens.
Next to?
Right across the street from the fire station.
Is it east of Coens or west of Coens?
East.
East.
It's where the beauty, there was a beauty salon there.
Oh, I thought that was the building that had water that actually ran through part of the basement. Kind of the stream.
The, the waterway does in fact go underneath that building. There, there are columns that hold up the building and the stream runs underneath it.
I thought I recalled that, that at one of our big flood times a few years back, I can't remember how many years, that there was significant concern about that. So I can understand Council Killian's concern because that whether or not it's designated in a floodplain.
During the 2000 flooding event, there was water in Coens basement area that was five or six feet deep based on the debris level that I saw in there.
And you know, what about this building, 250?
I did, I did not go inside of that building, but that.
We don't know.
As we said, this building is east of Coens building.
Right.
So it, it, that would depend on, on how waterproof the walls are, partially.
It's just the responsibility of the building owners and our responsibility. I would think that they would have a motivation to make sure that their building was unlikely to be flooded. Do we have anything else under the regular council agenda tonight?